Town Council regular meeting for August the 6th, and it's a beautiful day in Garner. Glad you could turn out. You're not afraid of a cyclone, a tropical storm, whatever it is, you'll come on well. We'll get out of here before the big rain hits. We have some exciting items on the agenda this evening, even while we all prepare for the oncoming storm. So let's start that we've called the meeting to order, and now let's have the roll call, please.
Mayor?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Mr. Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Matthews?
Here.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
And Mr. Maringer?
Here.
Thank you. And this evening, we're going to be led in the pledge of allegiance and then the invocation by Councilmember Damian Dellinger.
Please stand if you're able. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic whose it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me if you wish. Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to serve. Please keep everyone safe in the face of the incoming storm. Guide us towards your will through our best abilities this evening as we serve, as we seek to serve our residents. In his name we pray.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Dellinger. And now we have the section on here that is petitions and comments, and I'll ask our town clerk, has anyone signed up to speak on this portion?
And so is me.
Okay, well, we'll move right along to adoption of agenda. I think most of our council members have had a chance to look over the agenda and see if this seems to fall in the correct order. Is there, if so, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Singleton, moved by Mr. Matthews, and seconded by Mrs. Maringer. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay, passes unanimously. Thank you. We move along to the presentation section, but unfortunately, the person we were going to make a presentation to, Mr. Harmon, is unable to attend this evening, so we'll get him on the next available time. We'll move right along. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, and you can see in your hand out there that there were a number of items, I think six items, that your council members have been working on for several weeks on some of these, some for even longer, kind of they were more routine or non-controversial, or no public hearing required, so they've had a discussion and agreed to put these items on the consent agenda that can be approved en masse if we so desire. And so I'm going to ask council members, is there any reason to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, then. I'll ask if there's a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Vance and seconded by Mr. Singleton to adopt the consent agenda. I'll call on the council members, all in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, it's unanimous. The consent agenda passes. Thank you. Boy, we're moving right along tonight. Now we jump into the fun part, boy, public hearings. And let's start with this annexation petition, and I like to read the disclaimer all the time on these because it's important to remember what we're doing. Tonight's public hearing for an annexation petition is a legislative hearing which does not require sworn testimony. However, persons interested in speaking, including the applicant, must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff will present a brief presentation followed by the applicant, and other persons who wish to comment on the item will be recognized to speak. Council requests that groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group. And I was thinking of kicking this over to Mr. Treisenberg, but I might just go ahead and suggest that continuance has been requested by the developer, by the applicant. They have requested to delay this to future times, they're having more dialogue with the neighbors. And do we hear from, is a representative of the applicant here? Okay, we would like, we'd like to hear you say the same thing. If you would introduce yourself, name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Beth Blackman, professional engineer with Timmies Group, 5410 Trinity Road, Suite 102, Raleigh, North Carolina. Yes, so Pulte, which is the property owner and the developer of this site, has been working with adjacent neighbors and with the fire access design. So this is the piece of property, if you remember from the rezoning, that we were going to use for our secondary access for the back, actually benefits Brookwood as well, because they only have one point of access at this moment. So we've worked through a couple of different options for the fire access design with town staff, but the neighbors had some input about what they would like it to look like, and so we're going back one more time. And so we'd like to wait another month so that the neighbors would be in support of this annexation instead of kind of pushing it ahead early. So if you have any questions, otherwise we'll be back like September the 3rd, if that works for the agenda.
Okay, so September 3rd would be approximately a month from now, so that's the date you're suggesting for the, for the continuance.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Treisenberg, any comments, observations? Okay. And thank you very much. If that concludes your presentation.
That's.
We may have a question later. And now I'll ask our town clerk, are there any individuals who've signed up to speak on this matter?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move right along. If that's the case, then I'll ask council members, is there a motion to continue this hearing to September 3rd?
Second person.
[laughing]
Trying to do second.
All right.
Let Gray do the first.
Mr. Matthews, he really.
So moved, his second's already ahead of.
[laughing] Moved and seconded by
Yes, sir.
By our two council members, Matthews and Singleton.
Yes, sir. Hurricane pressure's really got to me.
Simultaneously, yeah. Well, thank you for that prompt response. There's a motion at a second to continue this hearing for annexation to September 3rd. I'll call on the council members, all in favor of continuing this to the 3rd, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, it's unanimous. Boy, you guys are whipping through it today. Now we get down to a very interesting project over here, and this is a conditional zoning map amendment for Wilmington Place, and our presenter starts with Mr. Jeff Treisenberg, our planning director, and Allison Jones, our development review manager. Mr. Treisenberg, it's all you.
On a family matter here for, I think this, she'll be back in tomorrow, so handling this on my own in her absence, but you have seen before and had a couple of discussions about here at the council level, and then it has also been to the planning commission over the preceding three months while they considered it and entertained some revisions and working with the applicant. So the case here again is CZ SB 2009 Wilmington Place, coming back to you for a possible decision tonight. I won't spend a whole lot of time going over the request, but I do want to note and focus primarily on things that have changed since this was at the public hearing. Again, the applicant is Site Investments LLC. You see the site there, up along Creech Road, which runs through here, and a future Wilmington Road Extension Corridor that would come up through here. The original request back in the day under the old ordinance was from R9 and MR1 under the old ordinance to a conditional MF1. Today, it is now zoned R4, and the request has been modified to our new districts, which would now be MFA. Originally, it came in as all townhomes, but now is a proposal for 55 zero lot lines, single-family detached homes, and 61 townhouses. Again, just a reminder of that current zoning here, you see that it is R4, primarily surrounded by all other types of residential. You don't really see anything non-residential until you start getting closer to the Joan Sausage Interchange with I-40. Reminder of the activity center map, and this did come up under discussion with the planning commission, the north, kind of in western piece here is within a neighborhood activity center circle, so we would look for some higher density or perhaps non-residential in this area. It is kind of tempered down, though, by the fact that the rest of the area is primarily a single family with some townhomes a little further away, and it doesn't call for a huge amount of change according to the comprehensive plan. Again, just a reminder of the actual request, it has been narrowed down to three out of 21 possible uses. And here, under some of the other conditions that are associated with it, in talking with the planning commission, there was noted a little bit of an absence of clarity on some of the connections into the open spaces and how they would be accessed. The public greenway was also structured in a way that as you get up closer to the Gatewood subdivision, there's a circular, circuitous route option, so it's not just a public greenway out to the middle of nowhere. And I'll show you that here on the larger site plan. So here is that public greenway coming up along the stream bank. It will continue up behind the Gatewood subdivision. Eventually, it would connect into the, the Gatewood proposal that's under review currently being proposed by Habitat, but there would be a private trail connection back around here to the main road. So again, residents would be able to walk a circuitous path and then also continue across and do a circuitous path here through this open space on this side. You have the applicant's portion of the future Wilmington Road extension being built as far as it can. This would be about where the bridge in some, a pretty substantial grade work would start to happen, but they would be paying a fee in lieu of. It would also build a portion of the realigned Creech Road and set this up for the future T-controlled intersection. This piece would eventually go away. This land right here was identified by the planning commission as being, they wanted to go on the record and note that this should be non-residential, so retail, service, restaurant-type uses in the future on this new corner that would be created. And then there would be a little bit of a fee in lieu for this piece here as well. Again, some central play areas, plenty of guest parking associated with these rowhouse-type, single-family detached dwellings. So there were some pretty significant updates to the zoning conditions. Numbers four and eight just had some clarity added that was missing. The number was adjusted because this was referring to both townhomes and single-family detached. There was some clarity added that as to what the pergolas and the kind of the passive improvements in these open spaces would be. Additionally, I'll just jump down real quickly here to number 25. It was added that one of the three open space areas will include a playground, so play equipment. That was one of the things that was in response to getting more conformity with the comprehensive plans, goals, and objectives. The other ones that were added here, 21 through 24 and number 26. Again, 21, the private walkways connecting to the greenway other than by street sidewalks, so I highlighted those when we went over, we're looking at the whole plan. They've also added bus stop easements on the newly constructed Creech Road for future transit extension. They have committed to that. The northernmost play area, which was one of those that I traced for you, the commission asked for a better understanding of how those would be connected and work into the overall pedestrian flow. Those play lawns will be at least 1,000 square feet. We noted the addition of the playground. And finally, number 26, prior to the first plat being approved, so before anything starts coming up out of the ground, the developer will contribute $200,000 to the town for future improvements related to the Creech Road corridor. So the town would be able to use those funds in the future for anything related to improvements along that Creech corridor. The fee in lieu, which is a separate item that will be handled at plat, when the plat for that phase is recorded, that 1.6 estimate for that Wilmington Road will be dedicated at that time and will be reserved for that improvement in the future. Just a reminder of the overall comprehensive plan maps, we have the activity center, as we noted. This is largely a neighborhood area, and again, you see that Level 2, just an area to strengthen. We do see a Level 3 across the way where the commission talked about trying to go on record as saying we need to reserve that for non-residential. In looking at the framework consistency, the overall framework was fairly strong, particularly when they made the commitment to the playground, the strong inconsistency went away. So from a framework perspective, overall, staff feels that it fits pretty well, and the planning commission agreed. You can see there, we did point out for the planning commission at their last meeting, this was the change in the consistency from the graph at the top to the graph at the bottom. So you can just kind of see how things shifted. On the land use and community character side, you also see the same two graphs kind of at the start of the planning commission review versus where it ended up by the time they recommended approval. Consistency is still divided, but it has moved in the right direction. They did make some changes, particularly some attention was given to providing that stronger connection between their private open spaces and the streets and greenway by making those enhanced connections and adding the bus stops along the future Creech Road corridor. So again, it moved it in, it at least moved it in the right direction. And just as a reminder, overall, this is our oldest plan in the pipeline. There is strong support for framework consistency. It does introduce a new housing style that can be seen as a target towards the working class. Again, it all depends on final price point. That bus stop area commitment was made. And we did note, though, that the area around it right now is highly undeveloped, so it does lack pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure that's separate from the road infrastructure. So meaning again, that in the short term, any travel generated to and from this development is going to be extremely auto-dependent. During the planning commission, I just tried to summarize into a few bullets what we presented for you in your staff report of all the concerns, questions, and comments that they had. Again, it was presented and reviewed over three meetings. They looked at it very carefully within the context of the larger transportation plan. They asked for clarification and more information about the zero lot line product. They acknowledged the modifications that the applicant made over the course of the review and appreciated those. There was some clarification around some of the details. Those included guest parking, access into the open space, the particulars of the alleyways, as well as the stormwater management pieces. And they went on, again, I will just say one more time, on record to note that the future development to the west of the realigned Creech should be non-residential in the future. You have their consistency statement for you in the staff report. I won't read that word for word, but the motion to adopt that statement and recommend approval was made by Commission Member Voiland and seconded by Commission Member Carson, and the motion did pass unanimously. So we're back here tonight for you to consider the reasonableness of the request, and we've highlighted again from the UDO, the things that you should consider when making your decision on reasonableness. And based on the consistency that comes from the planning commission, we've highlighted options number one and three. In your draft motions, one would be to find consistent and reasonable and to approve, and number three would be, again, to still find consistent but not reasonable for an identified fact that you would cite as part of that motion, and to deny the project. That is all I have for you. The applicant is here as well to answer any questions that you may have here prior to entertaining a motion, and we'll be glad to answer any questions that we can.
Thank you, Mr. Treisenberg. Excellent summary of where we've been on this, and as you said, has been in the pipeline for some time. We took a couple of timeouts for more information at certain points, timeouts that we spent trying to deal with the traffic solutions in the long term, et cetera. At this point, I'll ask council members if they have questions for Mr. Treisenberg.
But only, well, one of my questions is the Creech Road realignment and where that stands relative to this particular project. And we had several versions of how that was going to work out presented, and so I kind of want to know where that stands now.
Correct. So in the current transportation plan, it does call for a T-shaped intersection as shown here. DOT has weighed in and is supportive. Planning commission agreed that they also thought that was the best solution with some kind of stop control in the future once it is realigned. I would imagine that it would probably qualify for a signal, but if it doesn't right away, at least some kind of stop sign control. So the project does set you up for that future alignment. It puts in what it can today, but does require additional final improvements for this connection right here to be made once this connection here can be made.
I guess that was my question. When is that connection going to be made?
Right. So no timeframe on that at this point in time. It would be incumbent upon the town to consider whether or not to put any resources towards trying to make that happen. But Planning Commission, we discussed that as well, and understood that they would be making their decision based on what was in front of them as shown currently.
Any questions on this side? Questions?
We have no plans, no, no way of funding the project. We probably would not proceed with a bond referendum for this project because our main transportation project, which is Joan Sausage Road, we couldn't even finish that from a funding standpoint. So we have no way of this project moving forward in probably any of our lifetimes. You can go ahead and agree with that because that's probably correct. I mean, we're not, we're not going to, you're not going to sell bonds for this. There's no economic development here from a commercial standpoint. This is a residential-based project as are other projects, and they're not, the impact is, is minimal to the tax base. So we've got a project that needs improvements that we're not going to do. And we have other areas throughout town that has, need attention as much or more than this. So we have no funding source and no plans for a funding source, correct?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you.
Could you, that $200,000, hit, go over that one more time just to make sure I understand it?
So as I understand, that condition was worked out as that $200,000 would be paid to the town upfront before any plats are recorded if this subdivision were to be approved, and it can be put towards any type of improvement for the Creech Road corridor that would improve it.
And it's important to note that information provided to us by our town engineer, Ms. Harrison, is that for a quarter of a mile to make it three lanes, no curbing gutter, no sidewalk, and no right way, no right-way acquisition if needed, was $575,000 projected now as a quarter mile. And that's with no sidewalk and no curbing gutter, which you're not going to, the town can participate in the project, you can do that. So you're talking about well over a million dollars for a quarter of a mile of improvement. So you just look at this and what it would cost to do the top, the north, plus property acquisition, you're talking a lot of money. So again, I'm getting back to the money, and I'm just looking that off the, the information she sent us, one in April and one in, one in May, the information that she provided for us. So I read thoroughly last night and also this morning. So just stating that, again, we're looking at a project that we have. No money for that to cost well over a million dollars per quarter mile to do.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what that distance is from here to here. I didn't think that was a quarter mile, or what that distance is.
But you got to add that to it also.
Right, yes.
Plus property acquisition.
I have not measured that myself.
Yeah. I believe it's about, sorry.
Thank you.
Short people. It's about 400 feet across from here to where it would meet the existing Creech Road, probably slightly shorter here, so you might have 700 to 800 feet of road to be constructing there. And that would be brand-new road, not widening of the road. Yes, so definitely more than $200,000 for those pieces. But yeah, we could, we could definitely look at an estimate for them specifically.
Well, it's multiple millions of dollars because you still got property acquisition. Now, is the improvement there on the Creech Road as shown on here, is that a two-lane or a three-lane improvement?
Three.
Okay, so we're going from a three-lane improvement down to a two-lane bridge.
Yes, so the. Yes, so the ultimate section of Creech Road is intended to be a three-lane. There are not any immediate plans to widen the bridge. It is pretty common for a three-lane road to have a bridge that is two-lane because on the bridge, you don't have any turn movements, which is really where that third lane becomes important. So it's a little different than if you had a four-lane going to a two-lane bridge, then you are consolidating those lanes of traffic, which is more problematic. But the three-lane to two-lane happens more frequently and is less of a problem. So, the DOT about it. Yeah, so this section, the new section of Creech Road would be a three-lane. Ultimately, the Wilmington Road section would be a three-lane as well, but they would be building a two-lane section in the interim.
Okay, just home to the point that we're talking about something that we have no money to fund or make the improvements on, and there's no, the town's not going to condemn property, and the state's not going to condemn it because it's not a priority. Because there are other priorities on roads throughout Wake County that they would look at first, so just pointing that out.
Yeah, this project is currently on our horizon items on our C I P, but is not on the C I P as a funded project.
Another quick question while your staff's up here. Where the roads coming into the existing Creech Road? Have you gone out there and sat there and watched the traffic?
Here.
Right, no, right here, where the, where the roads coming there? Have you gone there and sat there? Coming from the north, from, from the curve, it's not bad because that's coming downhill. You ought to see the traffic coming around the bridge because it's uphill. You, you for a second lose the car, lose the vehicle, I'll rephrase that. All right. I know that's all by sight distance, about, all by measure, measured by foot, I'm just saying. You lose the car for a split second. All right.
Yeah, there's a lot of challenging topography out there, and I know that was a lot of the conversations that were had with N C D O T, as well as deciding the best place to put those intersections, even though it might be hard to find the, the perfect location, but get as much sight distance as possible.
Thank you. Excellent information there. Any other questions for planning staff at this point? Okay.
Well, I mean, there's the extension of Wilmington to the realignment, then there's also the extension of Creech to Creech, right? So there's, you know, additional. I didn't see the 26 in the packet, the condition. So it's new, the 200,000, and that, there's no way to evaluate whether that's proportionate to the improvements that need to be made since we don't have estimates. I know we'd had conversations about broader improvements to Creech Road for safety and creating sort of a list of what additional things could be done to Creech Road to make it safety and then putting numbers to that. So it, right now, it's just a number. It sounds like a lot, but as we know, these, any of these road improvements, most of them we can't undertake ourselves. So that gives me pause too because the number seems to have been plucked out of, of thin air. And then sort of, I'm not clear, there's the 1.6 for the Wilmington Road, then is there escalating, is there an escalator in there over time if it doesn't get done in 10 years in the ultimate cost? So, I mean, it's funny, I like the product, but it's got a lot of infrastructure challenges, and we don't have the dollars to remedy some of those infrastructure challenges.
Thank you. Again, excellent questions. And at this point, I think we have the applicant here who could give us some, some more information on this and then perhaps have some questions as well. If you would introduce yourself, please.
I represent the, the developers of the project, Site Investments LLC out of Raleigh, North Carolina. We could talk about all the conditions that we've gone through here, but I get the feeling that you guys want to talk about traffic. So we can talk about traffic now, and then I would like to take a few minutes to talk about the, the evolution of the project as it's been through here. I've claimed before in my career to be good, but I've never claimed to be fast. So it took us three years to get here, but I think we're at a place where I think is a, is a good place to be. Traffic. Existing Creech Road, we are widening Creech Road with the turn lane that it's like it's required along the frontage that we have. So we are putting that third lane in there. What was said by staff is absolutely correct. Three-lane roads go down to two-lane bridges all the time because that third lane is, is a designated turn lane, and you tend not to turn on a bridge. So going from two to three lanes down to two is not a traffic constricting issue. The $1.6 million that we are committed as far as our fee in lieu of is a, is based on paying 50% of the construction cost of the design bridge that we built, that we designed on our dime to cross Little Arm Branch to go to Hunter's, head toward Hunter's Marks stub of Wilmington, Wilmington Road. The $200,000 was not plucked out of the air. The $200,000 was the cost of that property that the porters purchased. They purchased that property for $197,000. We rounded it up to $200,000. It is true, we are not fixing all of the transportation concerns that may be in this area, but without our project, no steps toward the solution of these roads are built. The town is not very much into the, into the road building business in this particular area is being built by developers. We are following the town's transportation plan to a T. We are following to a plan that, with the exception of the work, the stuff that was down, done now, down by the Amazon plant, this project brings the transportation plan forward more than any other project in the area, period. Our design does give another entrance from the Gateway neighborhood onto Creech Road. It is building part of the ultimate dimension of Creech Road. We can't, we can't turn Creech Road because we won't be able to get rid of the, the curve that's up there now in front of the porters. So we are building as much as the, as much transportation infrastructure that can be built within our boundaries. We are not skimping on that in any way, shape, or form. We have 116 units, and just with fees alone, fee in lieu alone, we are paying 1.8 million, we are offering $1.8 million on 116-unit complex. We far, that far exceeds any information I've made or investigation to see if there's any other comparable issues by unit cost in that area. There are none. Again, what we're doing is we're going and putting as much traffic improvement on our project that is physically on our project. And in the two instances where we can't go outside of our project, we are offering a fee in lieu of to the town to help pay for the improvements for both of those situations.
I have a quick question on that.
Yes.
About the fee in lieu. So the $200,000, you've sort of explained that didn't come out of nowhere.
Right.
But you're basing it off of the purchase price someone else had for the property.
The purchase, the purchase of what the, what the Porter family paid for the, that missing link of the project or that missing link of, could be that, they paid $197,000. My clients rounded it to two.
So how does $200,000 help us?
It gets you $200,000 closer to being able to make that connection.
Why wouldn't you just do that?
It's not on our property. It's not in our project.
You could acquire it.
We tried. We offered, we offered, at one time, we offered $400,000. They told us, no, they wanted 1.2 million.
And that's what was presented the first time you came here was that scenario? And then there was, I remember that evening very vividly, I was very active, and there was a no. And then there was a miscommunication of some sort on representation and who contacted whom, whatever, and this has been two months ago. So I guess my question is where?
We have seen, we have seen no movement from the porters to get anywhere close to, to anywhere less than the 1.2 million dollars.
We're not, we're not going to have a debate.
Okay.
We, we have not had a conversation to do that. That's what I was saying. We have no.
Order, please, order, please, order, please, everyone, let's take turns, let's raise our hands, and let's talk one at a time. I have a hard enough time hearing without two people speaking at once, so please, let's be very orderly. We've been out all night, Mr. Gallagher.
Yeah, so that was my question is, what has been, what has been the status of any negotiations from the time you were here the first time? And did they, and I don't want to, it's a lot of proprietary information, but you've not acquired the property. And what is your position on why you've not acquired the property?
Okay. We have never heard, and I want to word this as best I can. I have never been told a number other than the 1.2 from the attorney because the attorney insisted that we speak directly to him. When we were at 400,000 at a, at a point, we could, there's no way we could extend anywhere close to that number. So we dropped it from trying to add it to our project. That piece of land has never been part of our project. So that is essentially what we're purporting, what we're trying to do is build a road to our property boundary as far as we can, and then someday it will be extended, someday, somehow will be extended. The, the transportation staff had come to us and said, look, we understand you are paying a fee in lieu of for the bridge. Is there anything you can do at the front, for this possible connection, future connection? And when we went back to our clients and we figured out what we can do, and the number we came from was, is how I explained it. I know, I, I don't know what the porters want to do or could do or any of that, anything like that. We were not allowed to speak to them and for whatever reason, and that's just where it stopped. We were so far, we were so far apart, we didn't see any reason to move forward to try and add this to our project. Again, that piece of land, the Porter project, the Porter land was never part of our project.
I understand, but it was part of the public hearing.
It was part of the public, it was absolutely part of the public hearing.
It's on the record.
And when we had, and when we had our discussion, the great, the great information that the staff did for all the projects around us about what could be done by future projects in future ways and future, you know, fee, fee in lieu of that took over, not over our project, but the project to the south of us and the Habitat project could, could pay into a fee because that, that intersection with Tryon isn't very far away. So what we see is we, we can't build that road. So what we did was try to, to bring to the town the ability to have some of that funding set up for that as to be part of a multi-use project that could possibly in the future generate enough fee to not only make that connection, but do other connections that the staff had looked forward at other parts of Creech Road, further down with Janks and a couple of, and a couple of the other roads. So that's kind of where we are with the transportation. We are building as much infrastructure that is on our property and where we are not building infrastructure, we are paying, we are, we are offering fees in lieu.
Okay, we got off on transportation, and you were still speaking to us about some other items, I think.
Yes, the other conditions, unless there are other questions about the transportation. Okay. Jeff gave a great summary of the, of the evolution of the conditions as we had. Some of them have never changed as there were eight or nine other architectural detailing conditions that are in the plan, which, which limited the number of townhome units that could be in a row and, and massing of, massing of roofs, dedications of front porches, back porches, windows, windows on the second story. And so there are, there are several other architectural detailing that it's in there. It's been part of the packet for quite a while. What we're also trying to do is quite frankly, bring in a new housing style that not, that is not currently in, offered in the town, and it is a single-family, a single-family project, single-family detached house. Some of the generic terms that those things are called by, row houses, Charleston-style homes, something like that, because the, in historic Charleston, where this stuff really started, there are narrow, there are narrow lots with narrow houses that are very deep that are served by alleys. So the pedestrians are right there by the front yard, and that's kind of what, what drives that part of the subdivision. You remember where Jeff first spoke, our project started at 146 townhomes. Staff came to us, came to us and asked us if we could consider doing a mixture of uses. They felt at the time that there were plenty of townhomes being built and being purported to do, and Garner wanted to know if we could possibly do some kind of revision. Well, we did. We dropped about 30, about 30 units off our, off our project to allow to do the single-family development. So this project is a mixed use, a mixture of uses of homes. It allows for, it allows for those different type of people that want to live in a townhome and not take care of a yard, or somebody that wants a little bit of a yard and, and a courtyard in their backyard for them to enjoy. Other, other discussions we've talked about are financial. The town is keenly aware of trying to make sure that projects are positive, are a financial positive action on the town. From what I've been told, the town tries to target townhomes that are in the, that start in the low 300s. After that, that's, the townhomes start paying for themselves with taxes and family services. And somewhere around the $400,000 range is where single-family homes start to pay more than, more than their fair share of taxes and are positively financially, financially supported. We, both of those conditions in our projects are, are here. We project the sales prices of the townhomes to start in the mid 300s. We think the single families are going to start in the mid 400s. So the, that price point generates a positive action on the tax base of the town. So again, what we're, that's what we're, that's one of the things we're trying to do. Those of you, I've, I've said, if you're not, if you're not familiar with the, with the T and D-style houses, I did, I had the honor to design Bedford better than 20 years ago, Bedford in North Raleigh. There are, there are hundreds of those houses in Bedford and have been wildly successful. In another such, in another area in Raleigh, the Alexander Place Shopping Center, which is on Glenwood Avenue, that has the Walmart in it, right behind it on ACC Boulevard, has a version of that, but the houses are even smaller. That was for a more urban office, more urban use. It's called Charleston, they're called Charleston Commons. And those houses, believe it or not, were only 18 feet wide, but they have a backyard, they have the ability to do pads and garages, both single and double. Sold very well, sold very quickly, and has been a boon to that neighborhood. And, and I would say is if you go down to ACC Boulevard and see the houses lined up on the streets with the street trees and the large landscaping, you'll see we, that that in fact is, is also a, a good, positive visual that's added to the, that's added to the area. We have worked hard trying to come to, trying to bring this model to the town. I know it's been a struggle for all of us because new is always struggling, is always tough. We have shown what we believe is a good product, and we have, and to our opinion, we have done as best as we can offer and more than, than anyone else in the area has offered as far as infrastructure goes in the project. I'd be happy to answer any, any other further questions that you have.
Okay, are there other questions for Mr. Walker? Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I just want to remind everyone that this is not a public hearing, but we take public input very seriously, particularly from the neighbors and the property owners around. And so it may be necessary to have some other conversations at other times. But at this moment, I'm, I'm going to take just a minute to voice my opinion. I rarely do. I'm usually just the moderator, the emcee, but at certain points, I feel like I need to say something to put in my two cents worth. When I ran for mayor, which was not long ago, the motto was aim high, Garner, do more, do better, be proactive. Sometimes I have to kind of restate the obvious here. The three issues that everybody has talked about continuously, number one is growth. How do we handle this growth? Wake County is the fastest-growing area in the United States year after year. This, this is a fact. We, we cannot ignore the fact. It's explosive growth. With, and with growth comes traffic. That's, that's the issue number two that I hear. What are we going to do about the traffic? It is serious. And the third, the third question, the third issue I hear continuously is what happens to our town character? How do we maintain, how do we remain the village where we know our neighbors and help each other? How do we maintain our character? Those are the three issues. Okay, now here's three facts I'm going to throw out. Here's an odd one, you may have never heard it said this way, but even if Garner never issues another building permit, never issues a building permit, we will still be overrun with traffic. Fact number two, Raleigh, our next-door neighbor, has over 1,000 homes in the pipeline on our doorstep. I don't mean throughout their jurisdiction, I mean on our doorstep. East Tryon Road, West Garner Road, Hammond Road, over 1,000 homes, including apartments and townhouses, in the works now that are within three miles of this office right here. And you think they're doing something, how about Clayton, Fuquay, Holly Springs, Apex? And you think they're doing something, how about Clayton, Fuquay, Holly Springs, Apex, all exploding? Those people are coming through our town if we never build another building or another house. We have to do something about the traffic. We have to do something to maintain our integrity. We've got two choices in my mind. We can stick our head in the sand and be help, and be a helpless victim, or we can take control. We can be proactive and try to get a grip on this. And I think this is a crossroads for us right here, this project. I've talked to someone earlier and they said, well, if we approve this project, does that set a precedent that we have to approve every project on Creech Road? And I'd say no. But I wanted to set a precedent that on Creech Road and everywhere, we're going to do better. We're going to do more. We're going to set the precedent high. If, if a developer can come in here with 40 acres and contribute almost $2 million toward the transportation plan, some of it required, some of it mandated, some of it voluntary, if they can come in here, this is the place to start. It makes me think about the developer agreement out on White Oak and Bryan Road. When Polte was going to build a large development back on Bethel Church Road, the traffic impact was overwhelming. They stepped up, working closely with town staff, did the first developer agreement that we've ever done. But in this case, the lead developer had, had a large enough project and foresight to say, well, we can put in that intersection, that light you need at Bran, at Bryan Road and White Oak Road. We can do that. It may cost a couple of million dollars, but if you'll help us recoup that from other developers who come behind us and use the same intersection, then we can get ahead of the curve and do this. And that seems to be working out well. We don't have one 200-acre development coming up on Creech Road, but this is the first one that's taken seriously the transportation impact, offering to do everything that's in the transportation plan and throwing some extra money to start that. I'm going to call it the Creech Road Improvement Plan. This can be a start. Will it solve every problem on Creech Road? Oh, no. But when the next developer comes, we're going to say, we want you to do the same kinds of things that this developer did. Above average, above average product, we got play spaces, we got amenities, we got walking trails, we got connectivity. They're going out of their way to enhance the transportation and making a significant financial contribution. And we're going to expect that of every other developer on Creech Road. And you're right, Mr. Singleton, we don't have the money in our pocket. And this, Creech Road is so far down the list on DOT, as you're saying, it would not happen in our lifetime. If, if, if we don't have, if the town doesn't have the money, DOT doesn't build it, who's going to improve these roads? It's the developers and their resources. My opinion is we should push ahead with this, build on that development agreement. We have to start somewhere. How do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. It's time to get started. And we have to work closely with the neighbors, the property owners to all move toward the same goal. We're not trying to evict anybody or crush anybody or overrun anybody with traffic. But if we don't do something, if we stick our head in the sand, we'll, we will be a helpless victim and will never get out of this hole. So I've said my piece and now I'll shut up on that and get back to business. That's, that's, I don't do that often. That's, that's my point of view. So that being said.
Can I, can I get a chance to rebut and shred your argument to shreds? Because it won't be very hard.
Knock yourself out.
The biggest thing you have to realize on the 1.6, they knew that was required when they came in. This is no secret. They knew that was there and they had to do it. So they said, oh my God, we're paying these fees. They knew that when they started the project. So that's built into their costs. All we're talking about is $200,000. We're not improving Creech Road. We're not improving Creech Road at all, is what it is. You say we're starting somewhere? It's great they put all these loops on the sidewalks because they ain't got nowhere else to walk. There are no other sidewalks anywhere for them to go. There will be a self-contained neighborhood. And their improvements, that looks good. Wilmington Road may never be, that, that part may sit there as, and not used as long as the current part's been there, 20 years, probably will be. So it's not improving Creech Road. You're dumping more cars in there. And there are other projects, there's one coming right behind this one that we know behind Gatewood. There's one already approved, it'll be 50, there's 97 units and there's another one coming with 150, 160, or 190, whatever, that hadn't been approved yet. Plus the apartments over here. The Tryon Road extension, as we understand, is not a priority for Raleigh. So that's not going to help anybody anytime soon. So again, the Wilmington Road extension goes to a point, whoever came back there was going to have to do that. This, this developer or 10 other ones. So we're not helping the existing Creech Road. We're not putting sidewalks in it there, we're not helping anybody down here. The main priority on Creech Road should be simple. We need to help the entranceway to Creech Road Elementary and make it safer for car pools and for buses. That should be our number one priority. We shouldn't spend a dime up here until that issue gets addressed. That issue needs to be addressed and that should be our priority, not this. And that's why you don't need, you don't build the homes, you won't need the improvements. Someone else will come along down the road. No doesn't mean never, no means no right now. This is one of the perfect projects of the one, the one, put the road, the infrastructure place first, then let the project come. This is the perfect example because of the many issues on Creech Road. And so that sounds good, oh, we're going to start. What are we starting? You're starting a self-contained neighborhood, they can't walk anywhere, stuff in throughout the neighborhood, which is a plus. There's no negative to that. But we're not doing the ultimate, which needs to be done, and don't have plans to it, don't have the money to. So sometimes you just have to be real and tell the citizen, we ain't fixing Creech Road. We're just not, it's not in the plans, it ain't going to happen. So if you approve this and that gets done, it's just going to sit there. It just aren't the plan, plans and the money. We, we couldn't, again, finish the Jones Sausage Road project. And we know there are other projects that may link with that one day, if it ever crosses over the Highway 70 and the District G projects and so forth, that are bringing commercial development. That's the priority. You know, you talk about growth. Change is inevitable, growth is optional. And because growth is optional, you can somewhat manage, maneuver, massage the growth and where you seek to have it so. You know, it, it sounds good, oh, this is a start. It's not a start because we're not addressing the number one priority on Creech Road, and that is the safety at the school. That should be the number one priority. This will sit there like this and people say, all you did was dump more traffic out on Creech Road, the existing Creech Road, and that's what's going to happen. We're not making improvements because of the cost. That's just true. We need to be honest with ourself and honest with the citizen. We ain't not fixing it because we don't have the money and it's not going to be in the plans. There'll be other priorities. Tell them what it is.
Mr. Singleton.
Wait, wait, hang on, hang on just a second. You're going to be finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I don't think we've called another question yet.
Okay.
Stand by.
Okay.
Stand by.
Stand by.
When you, when you look at the invisible numbers to fit, do that realignment that would fall to the town, this project ends up costing us a lot more than that $250,000. And when you start talking about whether projects pay for themselves, if this project's going to necessitate us building $3 million in road improvements, this isn't going to ever pay for that. And this goes back to the broader conversation about Creech Road and what improvements need to be made to make it safer and better for growth. We all have our different opinions. I think elementary school is a priority, but that's the work of the town that needs to happen because that Wilmington Road extension may never happen. You may never need to spend that 1.6 million dollars. It's just reality. It's on paper, it looks good, but it's not actually going to contribute to anything in the town. It may never get built. It may never get built. So it, it's a big number, it jumps out on the page. But if we have a comprehensive strategy for Creech Road to improve it and save, we can start to distribute those resources like we did down on Bryan Road, which is, because we don't have a developer agreement here, I want to be clear. There's no developer agreement in place here. But somebody should, needs to take the lead because without that property, because it's just, there's a number in the spreadsheet somewhere where you said, well, if we acquire that property, then we're going to have to do that extension, that's going to cost us how many more hundreds of thousands of dollars? We're not going to do that. We're not going to acquire that property. We're stuck with having to fix it later. So we're kind of given a, not a Trojan horse because the product is good. It's a cool project. I really like it. But in the grand scheme, in the context of the fiscal impacts and the opportunities that are available in that corridor, it, it doesn't meet the level of, of transformation that we need. That, that's my assessment. And I think the, I think the stick head in the sand is a good analogy or phrase to use, but I think we need to apply that to the, the fiscal impacts of the decisions we're making and not ignore those. Because this one has a huge price tag on it for somebody in the future. And you don't want it. I understand that. You shouldn't because you've got a product, you want to build it. But somebody's got to pay for that realignment at some point. And the taxpayers, to spend that much, that many dollars on the more, most northern part of Garner, the millions of dollars, it's hard to justify to everybody who lives down South Garner, 401, Halliburton, for what economic, what's the return on that investment? You know, there's a fiscal return, there's a safety return, there are all these returns, but what is that return on that investment? And it, it's hard to make that argument and see that return in how this is being presented for this evening. So, I mean, a lot of agreement with Mr. Singleton and there's opportunity here, but this isn't the opportunity. But it's out there. There's something out there that can work, but this, as is tonight, is, doesn't fit into the big picture adequately. And that's not a, that's not a question either, it's just observations.
Did you, did you have a question for Mr. Walker?
No.
So while you're there, I just wanted to ask, do you have any questions for Mr. Walker?
No.
Ms. Behringer? Ms. Matthews?
I don't write this many. I've got a feeling he's going to bring us some additional information. I like to hear it.
Okay.
I just wanted to come back up here and just for, just for clarity and for record sake, Mr. Singleton was saying that we're not improving Creech Road. That's not true. We are building a wa, a three, an extra lane in Creech Road along the frontage we have. And we are building, if you look on that, that first, that first bit of Creech Road, we are building curb and gutter and sidewalk on Creech, on existing Creech Road because that's what we have access to. So we are also building several thousand feet of Wilmington Road that's not going to be there today, that's not there today, that will be there as part of this project. We are also going to improve the gate, the situation with the Gateway subdivision, we're making a connection to the back door of Gateway, so they have a second outlet onto Creech Road. We are not going to solve all the problems, but we are, we are investing heavily in the infrastructure. We are investing in the town of Garner. These townhomes and these single family houses are all going to have positive tax implications to the town. So we are doing work today. The tax, the, the, the tax increase will be there for tomorrow, for the, for the information of the town. The $200,000 that we had, that we had offered there, we've been focusing on removing the curb, the curb on Creech Road. Mr. Singleton, we don't, we're offering the money, we don't have control where it is. If, if that money is better spent on Creech Road at the school, have at it. We're just, we're trying to be the first one to step up and say, okay, there's a bigger picture, as Mr. Dellenger said. And so we're going, we're the first step in that big picture. We're not the only step, we're not the whole step, we are the first step. And so short of being, this is, that's about where we can go. The only thing that would generate more money in this thing is to try and turn this into an apartment complex. I don't think you want another apartment complex because that generates way more traffic than we're going to do. Our traffic levels for our project weren't even high enough to require a TIA by the towns, by the towns UDO regulations. Our ta, our traffic is not that detrimental. And the ta, and the, the information that you got from your, from your staff is that yes, Creech Road is going to be busy someday, but even today, it has capacity. With the addition of this, it still has capacity. Is it like it was 30 years ago when it was a two-lane country road through nowhere? No, it is not. It has changed and it is changing. However, we are trying to bring the infrastructure money and construction as the first step of the improvement in this area. I just want to make sure that was very clear, that we are in fact, not only building new thoroughfare roads through our project as the transportation plan calls for, but we are in fact improving existing Creech Road to the best of our ability and to the, and to the limitations of our boundary.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Well, we got out of order just a little bit in that we had a lot of good discussion, that was a very, very good discussion, without a motion on the floor. But I, I think this is a very complex issue, a lot of factors to be considered, and I greatly appreciate everyone's input on this. This is very important. Mr. Trezenberg, I noticed you looking, is there anything else you'd like to add to the conversation? Okay. Good. Well, that, that being the case, if there's no further questions for the applicant or for Mr. Trezenberg, I'm going to ask if there are a motion regarding approving this ordinance for, for this project.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion, at least put it out there and see where we'll go with it from there. Okay?
And Mr. Matthews makes the motion to, to approve this amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Behringer. Okay, there's a motion made and seconded.
Sorry. You're required to make the reasonable statement.
I'm going to read that whole thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I was interrupting. I got ahead of Mr. Matthews, he got ahead of me a minute ago. Go ahead, Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Town Council, having considered the Planning Commission's recommendation in relevant portions for the 2023 Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, find CZ-5B as in Bravo dash 20 dash 09. Let me back to something, make sure I got it right. That we accept Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistent zoning request to adopt land use plans in the section three of the staff report as our own. And I further move that the Town Council adopt ordinance 2024-5288 approving rezoning CZ SB 20 dash 09. Its request is reasonable in the public interest because the proposed district is compatible with present zoning and conforming use of nearby properties with the character of the neighborhood.
Ms. Jones, do we qualify? Thank you. Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and I suggest we have a roll call vote.
We have a debate.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I thought we had the comments, but hey, we'll have some of them. Okay, we got, we, that, that's fine, that's fine. Again, we had a lot of discussion before, and now that there's a motion on the floor, we can have some more discussion. So who raised their hand first here, Mr. Dellenger?
I think Mr. Matthews making the motion has the first opportunity to open debate. Does he have any comments? He made the motion, he has the floor.
Well, I would concur what has been presented that, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, all this is going to start somewhere. And I think the, the developer has stepped up and done everything we've asked of them and, and beyond, and is trying to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. As you had mentioned, we had the same situation out on Bryan Road and White Oak Road when the private sector stepped up and started being part of the solutions. So I'm hoping this will be a beginning here. And it starts somewhere. And, and traffic goes both ways on that road. I was up there this weekend, just watched a little bit on Sunday, some go to Raleigh, some comes to Garner. Everything didn't come to Garner. If people are working there, maybe they're working in Raleigh, I don't know who, who's going to buy all this. But that's a two-way street. It can go to right or it can go left. So, but I think it's an opportunity for the town. I think it's going to, must certainly meets the standards of what we need to provide revenue as far as, for services that we provide, that we, the town does not lose money on it. And I would encourage my colleagues to let's move forward on the same.
Matthews, Mr. Singleton?
Let's remember this, three current transportation projects that are either in progress or planning for the town of Garner. Jones Sausage Road would not happen without a grant from Campo and the money that's been off to the town. The project would not take place. We can't do it on our own. The intersection, Mr. Matthews mentioned, the intersection of Bryan Road and White Oak Road, without a developer agreement, would not take place without someone else paying for it. The roundabout at Ackerman, Hebron Church and White Oak Road, without the grant money, the C Southeast Safety Area, or whatever it was, I believe it was called, would not take place without grant money. Even though we put money into it, that was part of it, it's increased substantially because it's increased substantially because of cost of everything increasing. So any transportation project we've got planned that's gonna have a major impact, we can't pay for. That's just a fact. So, while I appreciate again, everything mentioned about what they're doing, they're doing the transportation plan, there, there's no surprises here. Remember Wilmington Road is gonna be two-lane, not three-lane, the ultimate build-out, and that's fine, because the part of Wilmington Lane that got, not, excuse me, Wilmington Road before got built, and it's two-lane. So, again, we s- we're not helping Creech Road. You say we are, but unless they built it out, and we made them build it out, just not helping Creech Road, and because it's gonna sit there just like that for quite some time. And, you know, it, it's, it's just, we're just spinning our wheels. Again, we can't afford to make those improvements, because we can't afford any of the transportation projects we already have without grant money. So that's something they have to remember when you say, oh, we're gonna connect, fix Creech Road, we're not. We should take money and budget money to fix the driveway interest in the Creech Road school to make it safer. That should be our number one priority, period, whether it's a hundred thousand, two hundred, whatever, the county may help. But that's how you make a road safer and have more impact, but we'll see where it falls.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Ms. Behringer, any comments, questions?
Just a couple of comments. Uh, I understand that Creech Road is certainly not an ideal situation to place something on, but we have to start somewhere, and if we got grants for improvements in other areas, we can apply for grants for improvements here. We don't know what we don't know yet, and I would like to see us pursue applying for grants to see if we can get somewhere with that. I don't, don't disagree that the entrance to the school, uh, needs to be improved, but that does, it's not mutually exclusive, both of them can be done. North Garner has, has lagged behind or been neglected or forgotten for a long, long time, and it's time when a developer who comes forward to offer some improvements as partners with us, it's time for us to think about that and stop leaving North Garner out.
Thank you, Ms. Behringer. Mr. Dellenger?
To, I, I think, you can be part of the solution and part of the problem at the same time, and our job is to measure, are you more part of the solution or part of the problem? And this, this project fits perfectly in, into that sort of equation, because what it creates is this, these sort of fiscal challenges that we don't know how to resolve, and we've re- we have resolved this in other parts of the town with the Walters Buffalo Agreement, O'Brien Road. However, that had to be in place prior to coordinating all this work. So it's a step, this is a step, but it's not a coordinated step. That's really the problem, it's not a coordinated step to solving this problem. The, the other issue, question I have is the fiscal assertions that have been made on the break-even are not, have not been presented or tested, and I know we're revising that right now, so that's a big unknown as to whether these are gonna be net revenue positive or not. Um, the other is, again, we don't have any cost estimates for these improvements, we've not decided what to prioritize, whether it's Creech Road, this intersection, we don't have estimates for how much it's gonna cost, and what this contribution is on the table of 200,000, maybe we should ask for five. Give us, I mean, it starts to, Mr. Singleton said, you know, it starts to look like a gift, get favor, well, about five and a half, you know, 500,000. Well, then, we don't know how, that's my point, we don't know how much that contribution stacks up to what the improvements that need to be made are. Um, my recommendation is that we abandon the motion and continue this until we have really gotten some firm numbers on what the improvements on Creech Road, that we wanna prioritize, what they are and how much they're gonna cost. And maybe that 200 is astronomical a great amount of money, maybe we say, we're gonna ditch the Wilmington Road extension, but we'd like some contribution somewhere else. Walters Buffalo, that Brian Road work, because it was a coordinated effort, to just approve this tonight isolates us like every other project, it's not a coordinated step towards fixing our problems, and we're not really clear on what additional problems it's creating, because that purchase of that property right there is gonna be more than 200,000, a, and we don't, we just don't, we need to make fiscal decisions, we don't have enough information. My recommendation is we discard the motion and continue this, and continue the work that's started to be done on creating that Creech Road plan, so that we have dollar figures and we can bring those partners in to solve these problems with money and a timeline.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, just a few things here, uh, as was mentioned in the briefing, this is one of the, if not the oldest project that we have at the pipeline right now, which has gone through a number of iterations to get to this point where it is. And just to briefly talk about the Jones Sausage Road improvement, that it has gone through iterations as well with its revisions and the, and the reduction in scope, however, in doing that, it's preparing, uh, to look at not only the, the, the piece that has been, uh, that's being supported by the citizens, but it's also looking at future, uh, of the Jones Sausage going across, uh, the, the railroad track and continue over, over to 70. It places it into a better position for future development, which will cause it to eventually score higher as it goes through the DOT process. And to, for, and for the improvements that are being currently proposed are, could possibly be something similar here, where a part of it's being completed, and, and as, as we continue to look at, study and grow relative to transportation, uh, we may be able to look at it in more detail to see, okay, how does this help us with even getting more improvements to say that, because we are already making improvements that are part of our transportation plan, that we can look at it more favorably in getting the necessary funding to do the improvement. So, there are things that, uh, this has a, a number of good positive, uh, outcomes when it comes to looking at the future, uh, when it comes to transportation. Transportation itself is a problem throughout, not only here, but throughout the area, when it comes to trying to improve the systems that we currently have, to make them more conducive to move the traffic that we have in place. And as it also has been mentioned, that this development is the current, only development in this area, so, infrastructure relative to the moving of pedestrians, uh, is not feasible at this time, however, they are doing their part in, in to provide those particular infrastructure so that when others are considered, they can connect, connect up to it. Uh, so they have, in my opinion, gone and, and, and started a process that, uh, although it's painful with the growth and our positioning is, is a perfect one relative to Garner and it's, and the, the situation of surrounding growth, is one that, uh, it's setting a higher standard relative to what we've seen before, and also, uh, to the, uh, but also it was set a, set a, uh, a standard, a bar, a higher bar for others who would, would like to try to come in and, and do, uh, future improvements if this project is approved. Uh, so there are a number of benefits there for consideration, uh, as we move forth, uh, with, uh, with, with looking at how, uh, how, how we continue to try to have smart growth as much as we can based upon information we have. Uh, and will, will we answer all the, will this solve all the problems? No. Will it, uh, can we answer all the questions now? No. Uh, do we have to make tough decisions tonight? Yes, we do. And this is placing us in a position where we have to make one of those uncomfortable decisions of looking at the growth, because it, it's, it's, I would say, it's a, it's a problem where we, we are not isolated from the growth, growth is coming, it's going to happen, it's just a matter of, of how, how we grow and how we, how we try to work, uh, through the problems that we, well, the, yeah, the problems that we currently have relative to it when it comes to transportation density and, and really the type of product we want to see, uh, in the future. So, with that, I, I would recommend not stopping, not stopping for more information, uh, because, uh, because I, I believe that we have enough to make a decision on this, either up or down tonight. So I just recommend to hold the motion and continue on and see where it falls. That's where I am.
Thank you, sir, there, uh, hang on, just a, yeah, there, there's a motion on the floor and second, we're gonna continue the discussion, just want to make sure Mr. Vance was finished.
I'm finished.
Okay, Mr. Dellenger, you have another question or comment?
Off-site improvements that are necessary on Creech Road can only be addressed through a developer agreement, and the projects in the pipeline on Creech Road have very little frontage, and without a developer agreement, we're gonna be hard-pressed to get those developers to coordinate and operate in a coordinated way to address the concerns on Creech Road. And so that's why, even with the Walters Buffalo, we, if everyone just does what's a part of their proper, project, none of the improvements on Creech Road are gonna get done, because none of those projects have enough adjacent property to Creech Road. So we have to decide, how are we gonna address what needs to be done on Creech Road? The development is not going to take care of it, and absent a developer agreement.
Anything else, Mr. Dellenger?
Somebody told me I'm wrong.
He's, he's, Mr. Matthews, correct, the, what the developer did is follow the transportation plan that staffs it into, there's nothing that we're setting a bar, we ain't not doing anything like that, you just follow the transportation plan that staff directed into it here, do this. So this is not some magic in a, in a bottle or anything, and I, I begin to appreciate change from 161 townhomes to, the made changes that you made and reduced it by 30-plus units, that's, I think, a pos- definitely a positive, and all the trails you put in and the sidewalks. But again, if you want to think we're helping Creech Road that's fun, it would be just as well sitting there, natural, with trees as it is now. A lot of people would like that anyway, because of, that, don't keep talking like growth is coming, growth, again, you, the town has the option through the zoning, conditional zoning process to approve or deny growth, and if you keep approving it, then the growth is coming, sure, because it'll get approved, and, and that's just, everything that comes to force, you can say no, it is a two-letter word that everyone in here can pronounce. Again, again, no does not mean never, it just means, and never and forever, it just means now, that's not appropriate. And, uh, anyway, whatever. We'll be look, we'll be looking at the asphalt over there for, uh, several years. Again, our focus should be on, the other player airs a Creech Road, and that's affecting the school.
I wouldn't comment before we call the question, because I know Phil's gonna call the question, so I'd like to get in another word.
Well, hang, hang on a second, let, let's, let's have order. Uh, Mr. Matthews, you had your, well, Mr.?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the question, and the end of the, uh, I'm calling for the question, let's go ahead and do an up and down vote.
You have to do a motion, you have gotta do it, gonna call the question, you have a motion, second, and debate, that's the rules.
Okay, so we, we've been having some discussion, do we need, do we need to have some more discussion?
We have to address his motion, he's got a motion, any, stop debate.
Well, my, my personal opinion was we had, we had a lot of good input, and there'll be time for much more input in this stuff. Mr. Vance, did you have a question or a comment, or, or back to the motion?
I was just trying to listen to what you were saying.
Okay, yeah, uh, Mr., there was a lot of discussion, had a lot of discussion, and was Ms. Jones about to help me out here?
Yes, so, um, I believe Mr. Matthews has made a mo- motion to end debate or call the previous question, so that does require a second and a vote.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to call the question.
And now we all get a chance to debate the motion that he has put forward, correct?
I believe everyone has had an opportunity to speak on the pending motion.
No, I have a...
So you've all spoken on the original motion, and now there's been a question to call to end that debate.
So perhaps what you're saying is we don't have a lot of debate on the second motion to end the debate?
That's my understanding.
We, we, we made our comments and questions, and our debate during the open session, everybody has some input, some twice, now Mr. Matthews has made a motion to end the discussion, and there was a second to that. Help, help me out here, attorney. So at this point, do we call for a vote on the motion to end debate?
Yes.
Let's make that a roll call vote, as opposed to a voice vote, okay?
Would you like me to call the roll, or are you going to call the roll?
I'll, I'll point to him and, and come down and you, and you'll record it. Okay, so there's a motion that's been made and seconded to end the debate on this question, and I'll come down to Mr. Vance and ask him yea or nay.
To end?
To end the debate.
Yeah, ye- yes.
Okay, Mr. Dellenger?
I'm gonna vote no, because that, we're up here to debate.
Okay, Ms. Behringer?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
No.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that ends the debate, that means that we...
Now that brings the prior motion to, um, approve as consistent and reasonable, uh, for an immediate vote.
Yeah, and we had a, we had a motion and a second on, on that, and now we're ready to vote on that. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I'd like to do that as a roll call vote also, instead of just a voice, voice vote. And I'll start with Mr. Vance again, aye or nay?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Dellenger?
No.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
Nay.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Okay, it sounds like it passes three to two, and you recorded the votes there. So that, that ends the session on this particular, uh, project and motion right there, we've got a little time left here, and we do have some other items to cover, and I think we move next to our committee reports, and let's recognize council members who, uh, want to report from the committee that they're on. Mr. Vance?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to report that the, um, Affordable Housing Task Force met on August first to, our initial meeting to start, uh, planning, uh, and, uh, and it was, in my opinion, a, a good initial meeting, all the representatives for their task force were not able to be there, but we hope they're able to get their, uh, to see it on video, and also to get their information relative to that meeting, and we are planning on having, uh, another meeting, uh, this month on a date to be determined.
Thank you very much, extremely important topic you're addressing there, thanks for what you're doing. Uh, other committee reports, Mr. Dellenger and Ms. Behringer, committee report, Mr. Singleton, committee, Mr. Matthews, no more committee report, and we have a manager report or two, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, good evening, uh, mayor and members of council, uh, just two, uh, updates for tonight, just wanted to make you aware of. Uh, first, uh, just wanted to share with you that we had a very successful, uh, leadership retreat with our department heads last Friday. We spent the entire day at White Deer Nature Center, uh, learning more about ourselves, getting to know each other better, and, uh, talking about how we show up for work and how we communicate and work collaboratively. Uh, we had a facilitator, Dale Smith, with the School of Government, who came, uh, and worked with us most of the day, um, to, uh, help us, uh, with our assessment, we did the Tilt Assessment, Leadership Assessment, Assessment that helps us understand our, how we lean into the work we do and what our strengths are, and how we like to communicate and follow up. It was a very, uh, informative day, uh, we had a lot of fun as well, and the mayor was gracious enough to come do a welcome, and he got to saw, get to, uh, was able to see a funner side of, of the leadership staff as we did our icebreaker, but it was a really, um, great day of, of learning, of camaraderie, of connection, and it's just the start of things to come. We're gonna continue to build on the time we spent together this last Friday. So, I just want to, uh, thank, uh, Assistant Manager John Hodges for all his help and support and guidance in making that happen, as well as our Deputy Clerk Rebecca Murray, who was really helpful in the logistics part of the day. So we're excited to have had that opportunity, and we look forward to more. Uh, the second update is regarding, uh, Tropical Storm Debbie that's headed our way. Uh, just wanted to make you aware that your emergency management team, or your Emergency Operations Center team, has been meeting since early part of the week, uh, to, to talk about any storm updates, we listened to the National Weather Service briefings, uh, just to make sure that we are prepared and ready for the rainfall that we are expecting, uh, from the tropical storm. Uh, we've also been working with Communications Director Rick Mercer and his team to make sure we're getting information out to the community about how to prepare. Probably one of the most important things, uh, residents can do is, uh, now that we have a statewide declared emergency, is to adhere to the emergency and try to stay off the roads during the, the heaviest part of the rain, but we would also encourage residents to sign up for the Ready Wake System, which is the emergency notification system, and that'll give you real-time information about hazards that are in the area, not only with flash flooding, but any other issues related to power and those kinds of things. So, we'll continue to monitor the storm, uh, we'll share information with council tomorrow, as well as with the community about what the next few days are gonna look like in terms of town operations and how we're preparing. So, just wanted to make you aware of the work that's happening regarding storm preparation. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that council may have.
Any questions for the Town Manager? Thank you very much, Mr. Matthews.
Uh, the manager sure knew, they're gonna, uh, put up the Emergency Operations Center on Thursday, which I think is a wonderful move, uh, to coordinate all of our emergency services, and that serves a great use, I think it's a great idea of making that happen.
Yeah, so we're, we're going to activate with the Skeleton Crew, our Emergency Operations Center, um, just to monitor the situation and make sure that, um, should there become a need for, uh, emergency response, we're prepared and ready and coordinated. It's also a great training opportunity, and anytime we can get together and train over emergency operation incidents, um, it's important to do so. So we're looking forward to spending the time together.
Excellent, thank you very much. And we move to attorney reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, unfortunately, I was not able to attend the department head retreat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, I was...
We're watching you on TV while you're talking over here.
On, on Friday, as I mentioned last week, Assistant Town Attorney Aaron Gibbs and I attended the North Carolina Association of Municipal Attorney Summer Conference, uh, last Thursday. last Thursday through Sunday, and we will be bringing you some information and sharing that also with our department heads and town staff, particularly, um, timely issues such as dealing with monuments, um, social media, and, um, legislation from this past short session. Uh, so we'll stay tuned, and we'll be providing you with that information. Um, I'd also like to take this time to recognize our legal intern, Max Harris. He will be finishing up his internship, um, this week. He's been a valuable part of the team this summer, and, um, we wish him well as he finishes his last year at Campbell Law School and takes the bar, and, and hopefully he will, um, be a municipal attorney one day.
Yes, I told him he could come back on a consultant basis anytime, as long as it's free and you just sit right down there. Thank you very much for what you've done, Max. It's just a, a great experience for all of us. Anything else?
That's all for my report.
Okay. And how about council reports, or other things other than your committee? Mr. Matthews, any?
Uh, just a comment. Uh, it was last Friday, I received a phone call from a concerned citizen about vandalism, vandalism on her monument, veteran's monument out there, which is, uh, near and dear to my heart. I call it sacred ground out there, but somebody had painted and marked up one of the, uh, stones and all. So, uh, I immediately got on the line with our town manager, and it was a matter of a couple of hours, Public Works was out there, and, uh, it's gone now. So, uh, but accolades to the quick action on that and, uh, getting it removed, because that's, that's a bad standard. I don't know who did it, or the logic behind it, but it was in poor taste. And, uh, and I'm kind of thankful that I went out there watching it happen. So, uh, thanks again to the town staff and Public Works for making that go away really quick. That's, that's one of our pride and joys out there, and we just don't need that kind of thing happening.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
That's all I got.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, and I'll follow up thanking the Town Manager and also Public Works, Mr. Jones and his, uh, his crews. The front of Town Hall, uh, entrance, uh, looks, uh, much, much better. I had complained about, uh, the dead plants and the lack of mulch, and, uh, yeah, you know, told them to wait till the fall, but they've put some plantings out there. I saw them out here working on today. It looks much improved over what it was, and so thankful for that. Uh, so we can get plenty of rain in the next couple of days. I just hope it doesn't drown them. But, uh, it, it does look much improved. The entrance to Town Hall should be, look as good or better than any, you know, facility that we have. If our citizens come here, the, the nature center should look good, the, uh, G-PAC should look good, erection or all of us should look good, and this will improve that quite a bit. So it's greatly appreciated. Also, I had mentioned at the last meeting that, uh, there's gonna be a back-to-school bash this Saturday at Garner Methodist Church. And at that night, I think I told you, it's close to eight hundred kids. The registered nights over a thousand, and, uh, five hundred, between five and six hundred parents now. So that's gonna be, uh, busy. And thankful for all the, uh, local sponsors who stepped up, buy supplies and send supplies in. That's a lot of kids. And that, too, I try to help. So just wanted to mention that again. Um, it's gonna be a busy day. It looks like the rain's gonna stop before then, but we'll wait and see. At least it won't be ninety-six degrees like it was last year. Uh, but it, uh, there'll be a lot of, a lot of people there, a lot of kids, uh, you know, getting ready for school. And kids are already in school, too. I think we all have seen school buses on the road year-round. Some kids are already in school. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks for your comment on the front, uh, walkway. And I think maybe you had some suggestions that led toward that improvement.
Just, just needed to look, we need, need some, some blossoms out there. There, there are plenty of plants that can blossom in the, in the heat, uh, and they need to be mulched.
Yeah, and I think it'll be well watered this week.
Yes, yes. And we have some, some local offices that have some of the big planters in front of their offices, that I think someone comes around. But some of those are pretty, pretty nice. Maybe, uh, we'll have some, one or two at Town Hall next year.
Absolutely, yeah. It shows real, really well. Ms. Behringer, reports?
Uh, I don't actually have any reports. I have a couple of comments. Uh, after all these years, when I've talked about flowers and color and public art, I am so excited that we are seeing, yet we're seeing appreciation for the flowers and the color. It, it makes a huge difference. It does. And, uh, I, I messaged Mr. Singleton earlier in the week. I wish I could be there Saturday for the back-to-school bash. I think that's wonderful. I will be out of town, but I really appreciate, uh, his church taking on that, that call.
Mr. Dellinger?
Nothing to say.
Mr. Vance? Okay. Well, then I'll mention two very positive things that, that I encountered in, in the past week or so. One was the Garner Info App. I know staff's been working on it for ten years to, to report, uh, issues or make suggestions kind of thing. And I've kind of made that my hobby, to go in and report cars that haven't moved in four years in people's yard or in the road or trash here and there. And it's working great. It took me a, if there's a problem, it's user error. It's me not knowing how to do it as well. But I've had great success. Uh, Public Works, the police, uh, Parks and Rec, whoever, they, they jump on it and get it resolved. It's, I just want us to keep encouraging our citizens to use it. If you're there looking at the junk car, you can take a picture. It knows where you are. You say junk car, right here, please help. And, and it goes out there, and the next thing you know, they put, uh, please take care of your car, or it'll be towed in seven days. And then it goes away, one place or another. So it, it's a great app. My hats off to all the staff who continue to run this. And the other one I wanted to mention was a great event, uh, last Thursday night down on Main Street. Uh, one of the business owners there had organized a beach music festival, and it was a fantastic turnout. Uh, people even paid admission to get into it. But the most, uh, exciting thing about all of it, I talked to at least half the people there. I, I find it easy to talk to people. Uh, and over half the people that were there had never been to downtown Garner. They didn't know it existed. They said, "Look at this place. Is this cool or what?" So mission accomplished. My hats off to all the folks who worked on that, putting that thing together. We don't, don't see enough of that. And that, that's all I've got. And it might be time to move toward a closed session. Ms. Jones, can you give us the directive that we need?
Yes. Um, this evening, we're asking for a closed session pursuant to Section 143-318, Point 11A5, to discuss possible real estate acquisition, and, uh, 143-318 Point 11A3, to discuss pending litigation.
Some more, second?
Second.
All in favor? Was any opposed, bade nay? None? We will move to a closed session. Thank you for coming tonight, braving the storm. Uh, we'll see you next time. Or stick around. We'll be back here soon.
And now we return to our regular session of tonight's town meeting. And I'll call on our attorney to give us report on what took place in the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town council gave instructions to the attorney regarding the handling of pending litigation, and also gave instructions to staff regarding acquisition of property.
With that being said, is there any other business or comments we need to address this evening in the regular session? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. Behringer, seconded by Mr. Vance. All in favor of accepting the motion to adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay, we stand adjourned. Thank you.